Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Committee of the Hall of the Township of Stone Mills Council to go over the draft budget for 2024. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Sherry and Doug, any discussion? Hall in favor? Gary, thank you. We have no delegations. Any declaration of conflict of pecuniary interest? We all have a pecuniary interest in this document, so none need be declared. Business to be considered are 2024 draft budgets. Our recommendation is that the 2024 general levy for operating and capital budgets be received as follows. A township operating tax levy requirement of $5,274,248.05. B, a township capital levy requirement of $1,378,542.12. And a Newburgh waste levy requirement of $23,680. And secondly, that the 2024 general tax rate for operating and capital budget be received as follows. A township operating and capital tax rate of 0.00667967. A Newburgh waste tax rate of 0.0031753. And thirdly, that staff post notice of intention to adopt the 2024 budget and further, that the bylaw to adopt the budget be brought to the February 20th, 2024 council meeting for first reading. And further, that the bylaw to adopt the 2024 budget be brought to the March 4th, 2024 council meeting for second and third reading. By moving this, you are not committing to the final numbers in the budget. This is a motion to get it on the floor and consider the numbers that I have just read out. Can I have a mover and second for that, please? Wenda and Wendy, any discussion on the motion? The motions, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. So who's going to do the introduction? Jason, are you going to kick it off? Are you going to do it all as various department heads? How do you want to do this?
Thank you, Reeve Wise. Much appreciated with respect to tonight's proceedings. It'll be somewhat consistent with what we had done in the past and what council would be familiar with, with respect to myself providing an overview, Ms. Teeple, at tonight's meeting. Second to that, our deputy treasurer, tax collector is joining us and working through the slide deck as well as gaining some information and providing any background info for staff as needed. So with that, it's the process, if you will, will run very similar to what we've seen in the past. However, we've attempted to be somewhat more streamlined than previous in the sense of a PowerPoint presentation being provided as opposed to a budget narrative that's more of a ad hoc document. So we have a fairly comprehensive PowerPoint that we plan to run through and overview all the different aspects. It's not your line-by-line Excel document that you've seen historically. All that information is contained within the binder that's before you. So just with respect to what that is and why you've got a fairly thick binder of information, the start of that is the PowerPoint presentation that overviews, I believe it's 55 pages, overviews the document as a whole, operating and capital. And I'll walk through that presentation as we proceed. The second tab is an assessment comparison tab that would be very similar to what you've seen in the past. Then moving into the tax rates for the Newburgh and waste rate, summary and operational, summary of operational and capital budgets is also printed for your inclusion. The full detailed, this is more consistent with what you'd historically have seen as it relates to a line-by-line item. It's green tabbed in my binder, the operational budget, fairly detailed and comprehensive, followed with the capital budget. Again, the line-by-line aspects in that capacity under the red or pink tab. You'll notice that the final tab in your binder, the reserve tab, is blank. That's not been completed because we don't feel that we have every piece of documentation summarized at this stage. So we didn't want to provide anything that was misleading in that form. So feel free to make reference to this binder, but what I would, what we're asking of you to start at least is that we turn our attention to the PowerPoint presentation. We will run through that. It's got every different notable inclusion within it, and department heads can speak to the specifics, and I'll just speak to the higher level pieces. If that's okay, I can kick us off, Reeve. The overview of this is that it's been a very collaborative group effort. We're here before you as a team. There's not one member of the staffing complement that would say that they did it solo, and I want that to be reflected more so in tonight's discussion and not direct questions to specific individuals, because I think you're going to see that this was a very collective document that intertwined as to how we've gotten to where we are today. As you're aware, our treasurer, Ms. Raymond, has provided ample material and done countless work, completed countless work in getting us to this juncture. And that's reviewing historic reserve documents that some of you may have not even known existed because some of us staff didn't know they existed. So there's a lot of information that's culminated into this document for tonight. The 2024 budget, as we all know, represents the financial status of our municipality, and it takes into consideration the grant funding that we're getting, expected to receive, what we're budgeting based on being successful in some grants and also utilizing tax levy versus general reserve allocations to pay for certain items that we're going to outline in terms of capital and operational requirements. So again, this overview, we're trying to be extremely transparent with this, and I think that's what, as Reeve Wise read off, we also want it to be reflected in terms of our recommendation. We're not here tonight asking for first reading. We're not here tonight trying to get it approved. We're really here to give council and any member of the public who's got interest in this process the opportunity to get that and provide that to us so we can make the required reflections and changes that were needed. So jumping right into the accounts and the specifics, starting with general government, the 0004302 account. This is a fairly substantial account. The OMPF funding just exceeding just over a million dollars. And as you may be aware, based on previous work in the council world, this is our mainstream of funding for rural municipalities throughout the province. It is notable to note that there's been a decrease of approximately $30,000 from last year. So we wanted that to be known, but we are obviously including that as a major source of our funding revenues moving forward.
So just of note, I believe that was also decreased last year. I'm not certain about that, but it would be interesting maybe for our next meeting, just for public information, to track the OMPF fund level for the last three or four years, just so we know. Because if it's going to be chipped away at 2% or 3% a year over time, that becomes a significant drain, and it'll have to be made up by our taxpayers or some other source of funding. So if that could be done, that would be interesting, to say the least. Thanks, Jason. Carry on.
Thank you, Reeve Wise. And I apologize, I forgot to mention, please interject at any juncture, any slide. We're not really, I don't have questions built into this. We haven't had a lot of, so jump in, please. Direct it to whomever you think is most appropriate, but we'll make sure it's answered as we go, because we really hope this is an iterative process and discussion like that. So thank you, Reeve Wise.
Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
Just wondering in follow-up to what you just said, John, if we should be writing our MPP and asking for an explanation as to why it's been reducing? With the inflation rate the way it is, we can't, even small amounts hurt. I think that we should do that.
I agree. Let's do that once we see what it tracks at for the last four or five years so that we've got a record. And yeah, it's kind of going at the inflation rate, but in the other direction.
So slide four, general government, 0005850 and 5851 is our infrastructure loan principal and interest. We touched on this in the prelude to tonight's meeting. This relates to the Dewey Road construction project done years ago, and it's coming due in the very near future. So this is our final second or last budget that you'll see this included within. Just making note of that. It's already coming off of the funding that we received, so it's not as though it's like a major hit. It's actually deducted. The other note on this slide is the tile loans. So again, for council's awareness, we have two within the municipality. It's an OFRA program with respect to tile drainage on agricultural lands to sort of facilitate and assist agricultural operations. We, this isn't necessarily a cost of ours, but it's in our budget for awareness. Administration 101, community vibrancy. From 2015 through 2035, municipality collects $145,800 from a CVA or community vibrancy agreement from our renewable energy project. And historically, we've always, from my understanding, we've always allocated those revenues at a one-third, one-third, one-third basis. On the breakdown in 2024's budget, what we're proposing is on the screen. Essentially, 48.6 of that would be utilized subsides municipal tax rate. 48.6 of it would be used for contributions of an upgrade at the medical center, a portion to our strategic plan initiative, as well as to our fire fit reserve in the hopes that we can make that event happen in 2025. The final one-third allocation is for a reserve that we have been topping, sorry, contributing to since its inception, which is currently sitting at $160,400. Administration continued, 1014901, transfer from reserves. So we have a municipal modernization fund, reserve fund. Currently, it's sitting at about $168,000. And council recall, not too long ago, we recommended or made recommendation at staff's level to get a new website underway and the cost neighborhood $128,000. And we saw that as a great fit from a modernization funding component. So that's why you'll see in this the budget balance, sorry, of that funding dropped to roughly $440,000. From an administration point of view, we have full-time wages of shy of half a million dollars. They're up from last year's, as you can see, and we have a vacant position in the CAO capacity, as well as what we are proposing within this budget as an executive administrative assistant position to support office duties and administration roles across the corporation. And those are budgeted differently for the length of time, just based on potential hiring practices within this calendar year. That's why you see 50% of 2024 and 70% of 2024 for each of those positions. With respect to wages part-time, we're continuing forward in that capacity of looking for additional help from an administration point of view. And the records management clerk is what we, is new. So let me try and provide a little bit of an overview to that. We have been receiving an increased number of AMPIPA municipal freedom of information requests and generally a backlog of digitization of files. So we have lots of our role files, et cetera. And when we had some overlap in our current position of administration assistant, we got some momentum started with making digitization of those files a priority. So Bev Reed, Mabel Wilson, that role, when we had duplication, we were able to see that through. We believe that there's a lot of work to yet be completed, and we think that a records management clerk hired on a contract temporary basis would help us consolidate our records from enterprise, community hall, Tamworth Hall, Newburgh Hall, and our vault in here to make sure that we have confidence as a corporation that any information we're giving out, you know, from example, from an AMPIPA or freedom of information point of view, that it's collective and whole. So that's the idea as to the inclusion of this within our budget in terms of that position. Secondly, a summer student position. We hire summer students every year. We receive funding. This is one that would be somewhat unique because in my five years, we haven't had a summer student in our office from an administration point of view. But we, again, think we have the ability to support that position and see some growth in a college or university educated person in providing them some exposure in the municipal government in the different facets of our operations. And hopefully, that can be a local student that's trying to gain some traction, and we're able to also give them some exposure into that municipal world. Administration continued, the 1015200 account is services, and I'm not going to read out all the services, but the big couple to note, the ARO, so the asset retirement obligation, the organizational review, and the asset management plan. We, based on some review with other jurisdictions and based on staff's knowledge of what those are expected to cost, we think those are around $100,000 for those three items to be completed. That's why you're seeing the services line go from essentially $25,000 to $125,000. We're proposing to add $100,000 to this account so that we can try and get ourselves in a get support on those different aspects of an administration requirement. Yeah, there's, again, I'm not going to read the slide verbatim. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. The 1015205 account is insurance. Keep in mind, $26,970 is not the only insurance that comes to the municipality as a cost. That is department-specific. It's more like 300,000. But yeah, we're expecting a 10% increase 2024. Not, again, that's general, that's generalized across corporations, municipalities in Ontario. That's not because Stone Mills has got bad press and we had something go sideways. That is just the norm right now. So, but again, we don't have the number in front of us, so that's why we're kind of taking that budget whole of a 10%.
Just a quick question in regards to the insurance administration side. What is the coverage for that? I mean, obviously, we understand the rest of it, but I'm just curious as to what the coverage would be on that.
There you go. Yeah.
So this is just for...
For, yeah, and through Reeve Wise. So just for admin, councillor Fenwick, we're in lawsuits on various items. And I don't want to get into too many of the details on active cases, of course, but the insurance coverage can be broad from hall rentals to general lawsuits on sidewalks to, I'm trying to think, there's a whole host of them.
Randy, did you have a thought there?
Oh, I was just going to say slips and falls on sidewalks, which was coming out of Jason's mouth. If there was an incident, if there was a fender bender, those would be the types of costs.
So would that be just under this administration portion, or would that apply to the roads department insurance coverage? Go ahead, Anita.
Thank you, through you, Reeve Wise. This classification and general area is a lot of liability. It has a lot of like the cyber attack that may happen, those type of things that don't specifically fall into categories like transportation, fire, halls, rentals, would end up in our category under the general administration.
Okay, thanks. I forgot about the cyber attack one, that alone. Or someone falling, coming in the office, that kind of thing. Yeah. Okay, is that all right, Rob? Or you have something else?
No, that's great. I just, I apologize, I wasn't very clear about that. I was, yeah, that, thank you very much for that. I was thinking, I understand the slips and falls and losses, of course, but something specific to administration, you can imagine someone would say, what possibly, I mean, I get we would need some insurance, but $2,300 a month for insurance on an office building, you wonder what could possibly happen, but that's a great point. Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
And we already did have a cyber attack. Anyone else in staff? Yeah, Jeff, go ahead.
Just to add to that, we met with our insurance provider two weeks ago as a management staff. And we encouraged them to come back to council and explain some of the increases and stuff that's covered. The big thing that came out of our meeting was user groups. I mean, everyone around the table, or at least the senior ones, know what the user group issues we've had, if they're covered or not covered for different events. So that's something that we're working on.
Jeff, anyone else at this point? Carry on, Jason.
Council 102, the 1025102 is part-time salaries. You'll see this through and through tonight's budget with respect to wages. There's a 3% wage increase applicable to 2024. So, yeah, 2024. So that's the line item increase there. 1025203, we had a bit of an anomaly in 2023, in my opinion, with respect to legal costs. Back to the norm, if you will, of $7,000 is what we're expecting for legal costs on council. And again, those things are, not only are the HR, their general code of conduct training that we, you know, we host, and anything that's council-specific on a legal perspective would be covered under that $7,000 line item. We have different line items for legal throughout different departments. For example, Rhodes has a specific inclusion, and so does Planning and Development Services. So this is council-specific. Conventions and training is not insignificant, nor is it significantly different than what you've seen in the past. $18,500 generally is $2,500, $2,600 per council member, and that's attempts to cover one fairly comprehensive attendance at a session, at a convention like Good Roads or AMO, for example. Donations, $12,000. We were nearly spot-on last year in 2023 with what council donated to our local community groups. We're proposing the same. Most recent conversation was a hall rental forgiveness, if we want to call it that, with respect to what we could do in our community for some of our community and user groups. That's, again, it's, we don't see that as being something that necessitates a big change in the council donation line, because it was, in our opinion, fairly ad hoc and not a significant loss monetary-wise to our council. If there's no questions there, we'll move on to 103, elections. We all know it's not an election year, but we still budget for it. $11,000 in the hopes that we can run a budget in 2026 for around $45,000 to $50,000. That's fairly consistent. Moving into IT 106, transfer from reserves, municipal modernization funding. Again, I touched on it earlier, but this is the website. And the modernization funding, if you'll recall, it was fairly strong in the sense of its bottom line or balance of nearly $450,000. Excuse me. Information Technology, 1065240, budgeting $85,000. Last year, we spent 72, and we budgeted 85. We are expecting, and I think this can be said across many of businesses and/or municipalities moving forward, there's more of an online presence, of course. You know, that's kind of where we're going, and you'll start to see that with things like we're including a software booking program for the arena. We, you know, calling an individual on their cell phone to try and see what the availability is for an arena and not knowing if there's a calendar that's publicly available to understand when it could be occupied or not. Those types of things are where we, as our staffing complement, see we need to go if we want to remain competitive on renting our facilities. So things like that, we think, again, there's not a huge line item hit for those types of services. But again, we don't see this dropping significantly. We think we'll be somewhere around that 85 number, $85,000 in 2024. One of the other inclusions, just to make note, Starlink is an internet provider, and we have, again, just talking about the reliance on internet connectivity and IT, we have troubles running our administration office when there's no internet. So we're looking for, there's no significant cost to this, but some redundancy in the internet provided to our corporation and making sure that we can run as a staffing complement when we have a blip or a challenge in our service that's provided. So that's another thing to be mindful of. Jump in, John.
Yeah, so is that a flat monthly fee, or is there a usage charge as well with Starlink?
James.
So there'd be a primary fee right off the start for the purchase of the hardware, and then there'd be the monthly fee on top of that. We've talked to our IT provider, and they suggested for the amount that we'd be using at this point, we would just need the more basic package that, essentially a residential package.
James, carry on, Jason.
Information Technology continued. Next slide, Brooke, please. 1065241, materials and supplies. Again, in 2023, you can see that we were over what we're budgeting for 2024. So some might say, well, what are you doing? You're not doing a very good job of that. Really, we want to look at those in harmony with the other line item of 5240, the services account. And we think collectively, we'll be fine in managing what we see from an IT perspective on materials and supplies as well as services into the year. So we don't have any, we've done a fairly comprehensive replacement on our computer system last year, maybe the year that last year. So we're not anticipating a significant overhaul on that front, and we see this being something that can be accommodated in a $68,000 budget. Fire budget, fire administration, sorry, 205 into the 2054900, the transfer, the $12,500 might look familiar because you saw it earlier. It's a fire fit. It's half of what we're expecting a 2025 fire fit event to cost, so $25,000 divided by two, and we're going to include that in this year's budget. And we want to pay for that or fund that through our community vibrancy funding that's received from Blue Earth. Transfer from reserves, nearly $300,000, the 2054901 account. There's a training structure that's being proposed to be constructed here, just where we use our training grounds near the landfill and quarry at Camden East. And a portion of that is to be funded from a donation that we received from Enbridge based on our work on the gas line, our assistance, sorry, on the gas line work that occurred on Counter Road 1 last summer. And the remaining of that would be funded, nearly $15,000 of it, through the tax levy. One of the biggest or most notable single line items, if you will, in this budget is the SCVA tanks. This is a $500,000 number. 200 of it is what we've got in a reserve that we've been planning for its replacement. These are a 15-year lifespan, so it's not as though we didn't know this was going to happen. But what we didn't know was that COVID was going to inflate the prices by a fairly significant amount. We've been putting money into reserves, and we thought we were fairly detailed in that 200K in terms of being able to afford that replacement in 2024. But unfortunate reality is, we don't think we are, and there's going to be a $300,000 increase on the tax levy to support that $500,000 purchase. And I'm going to ask James or Jeff to comment, but I think it might be on a subsequent slide. We've got the RFP out already, so we don't know how close we are on the 500, but they can speak to the dates and any more detail that I can, because I want to slow it down a little bit. This is a fairly substantial piece.
Yeah, whoever wants to speak to that. Go ahead.
Sure. So the RFP is out. It closes March first, so we will have a more concrete price after the fact. So, yeah, so we were budgeting yearly to put away money for this. And like Jason alluded to, with the pandem and the inflation that's happened recently, it's really drove up the prices of these items. So unfortunately, they're not something that we can put off. It's it's our main life safety equipment that we use every call, essentially. The the cylinders themselves, they have a lifespan of fifteen years, which half of them are hitting this year and half the next. We had discussions today about can we phase these in? We would rather not, because if we buy some this year and some next year, we can end up with all different models, also different kinds, and the interoperability between our stations would be gone, essentially, because we would have some in Tamworth that were one kind and some in Enterprise that would be a different kind or the potential for it. So so it is a big hit. And I will commit to you that we will sort of take that number, whatever comes in after that, and start analyzing for the future to sort of make sure that we're not this far behind as we go. But it's, it was just the inflation that really hit us hard in the the past couple of years. So other than that, we would have been pretty close, so. Yeah, and we we gave counsel a heads up last year on this that we were expecting the significant increase. So I'm hoping that the the R F P comes in lower than the five hundred thousand, but that was our sort of best estimate based on preliminary estimates we'd had.
Any questions or comments on that item? Big one. Yes, Rob, go ahead.
Yeah, I remember, James, we went on the tour of the township. We were barely getting to know each other's first names, and that was one of the first things you mentioned, be prepared. Yeah, and I was, that was an eye opener. I was like, excuse me, how much is that worth? Now, so, yeah, it doesn't come as a surprise, although it's no fun. There's, what do we do with the old ones? Is there, do they have any value of any type?
So some of them will have a little bit of of value, just because they would have a year left on the cylinders. We would obviously sell them on on gov deals, just like we do any of our surplus equipment. There could be some people that are interested in it, but any fire department I can't see would be so they we don't expect to be gaining a lot of monies back from the sale.
Now, I didn't expect that there'll be any any value domestically. I wasn't sure if it's something that gets shipped out or any of that sort of thing. If you've seen that, it's just good for people to know. The other thing, too, is I think you're you're mentioning not breaking up the purchase. I'm assuming that we may actually get a little better deal in bulk purchasing of all the equipment at once that may offset some of the cost. And really, what's a year? I agree with your efficiency thinking in that there's nothing like having equipment that doesn't work together. And if it costs somebody, you know, potentially costs them a health issue because of it, then that's a wise choice, in my opinion.
So, Rob, anyone else on that one? Okay, Jason.
Thanks, guys. Final point on on this slide, two oh five forty nine oh one. Good news, we got a reserve that looks like it's going to capture what we're hoping to capture, eighty eight thousand dollar truck purchase, and that reserve is sitting with a with a balance that'll that'll fund that, so. Keeping in the world of fire, in terms of wages, two oh five fifty one oh one, full time. Here's a breakdown of what we currently pay on a salary front. Our our team. As you, as you know, we don't have a full time dedicated team to this. We have a, we have an eighty percent salary of a chief, of a deputy chief, a thirty percent of a chief, and a ten percent of an administration. All that, we're projecting to be just shy of a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Wages part time outpace our full time, and that's because we have a fairly hefty fleet of part time volunteer firefighters. And of course, it's nearly impossible to budget that to a to a to a penny or to a dollar because of the fluctuations in call volume. So just be mindful of that. Fire admin continued, two oh five fifty two hundred, services. Sixty five thousand dollars in in services, and that's needed with respect to what's on the slide. But cylinder rentals and ladder testings and hose testings and all the other aspects that go into ensuring that our firefighters are are safe and protected and have the information or implementation tools that they need for for fighting these fires. Materials and supplies, again, ninety thousand dollars. You can see we we put the number from twenty twenty three in, budgeted eighty, spent one oh one. Looking at these two sort of har in harmony, like I, like I mentioned previous in I T. Material supplies and services, we're, we're, we feel confident that the ninety ninety thousand in the fifty two oh one account augmented with the fifty two hundred account will 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 give us what we need. Two oh five fifty seven twenty, capital building improvements. Again, I made comment to the fire training structure that's proposed to be built, and it's being funded by two, two different sort of funding streams or vehicles. So a grant as well as our general tax levy for a portion of that. Two oh five fifty seven thirty, equipment. This is the big line. We've, we've touched on it. We've got a essentially the lion's share, five hundred thousand, and that's going to be our our replacements for the S C V A tanks. And then you've got a hundred thousand dollars plus or minus for the, what we typically do in terms of bunker gear replacements and extrication tools. The other, you know, there was a good news story at the end of twenty twenty three that you may recall, that Firehouse Subs grant that we were successful on in the in the neighborhood of fifty five thousand dollars. And there's just a minor additional cost that we, as a corporation, are paying to supply, to to augment that in in getting the cutter and the spreader and the ram for our Newburg station. So it's not as though that that's going to be an entirely a a cost borne by our municipality and taxpayers because of that that positive grant we received.
Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks, guys, for putting that together. That's fantastic stuff, is smart thinking. And I'd invite everybody here in the room, if they have a moment, to give a five to her view to Firehouse Subs, because sometimes that's all they get. I plan on going in when I get a chance and shaking their hand and making sure that they know that it's going to a good place. That's really great stuff, so thank you.
I will actually be going there on the twentieth to do a sort of photo op with them, and and then there'll be press releases after that.
Good. Thank you.
I just want to make sure I'm on the right slide. Fifty seven forty. Sorry, apologies. A two oh five fifty seven forties vehicles, again, it was in the one of the previous slides, but eighty eight thousand dollars proposed to be pulled out of an equipment reserve, which we we have confidence, we have a healthy enough reserve to fund that. And we're looking to replace a nineteen ninety six three quarter ton pickup truck with the purchase of a new one. Two oh five fifty nine oh one, transfer to reserves. Just a, and I don't, I'm not the the expert on this, but I do want to take a second and make reference to an approved plan in two thousand seventeen that we call internally the Township of Stone Mills Emergency Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Plan. And that sort of drives what the find, what the emergency services department's doing in terms of why we're replacing this truck this year versus that truck next year and et cetera, et cetera. So we're, we're looking to to follow a line and follow and be aligned with that plan. And the reserve allocations and 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 reserve contributions propose to follow what we've done since two thousand and seventeen with respect to that plan. Doug?
Yes.
Policing, two ten. There's no big substantial change with respect to policing that's proposed within our corporation in twenty twenty four. The services are five thousand dollar budgeted, and in the fifty two fifteen account, you can see the increase is relatively marginal, fourteen thousand dollars on a million dollar, on a million dollar line item. So it is proposed to go up, but not astronomical, so just for information. The two twenty Conservation Authorities, so two twenty fifty eight oh one. Our levy is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars plus or minus. And that goes towards the general levy, which is just shy of a hundred thousand dollars to the conservate, Quinney Conservation Authority, as well as a capital asset management levy of of nearly seventeen thousand. You can see we included the twenty twenty three numbers just for comparison. It's an up, it's an increase of nearly eight thousand from from twenty twenty three. The two twenty fifty nine oh one, transfer to reserve account. This is where we're going to introduce the the second conservation authority into the equation. And some of us might wonder why, because we only have one within our jurisdiction, but we have a trail. So the, I'm jumping ahead, but the the Quinney Conservation Authority jurisdiction covers our watershed and the water control infrastructure capital asset management is nearly fifty thousand or forty seven thousand of this, and our line item is fifty six. So that leaves ten thousand dollars that we are proposing to put into a budget for the cat trail as we're expecting some additional compensation requests from the Conservation Authority related to potential deck repair on the Yarker Bridge, maybe a funding change on how this is being completed, because there's been conversation as of this past fall that they're essentially losing money and and they're not breaking even on how this, how this trail has been been maintained over multiple jurisdictions. And we're going to see some changes into the future. Now, all that being said, the conservation, the Katarakwe Region Conservation Authority, their general manager took a new position in in another organization. And I hadn't received any conversa communication or outreach from their organization since that departure in staff. So I expect, once they fill that vacant seat, we'll hear more of what this plan looks like for twenty twenty five moving forward as opposed to twenty twenty four.
What do you call, or sorry, the Katarakwe Conservation Authority and the Katarakwe Trail. All but seventeen kilometers of that trail falls into the Katarakwe watershed, and the Katarakwe Conservation Authority has control over that. They also, at the time of inception, included the seventeen kilometers that happen to be now in Stone Mills. That seventeen kilometers does not fall in their watershed. So we're kind of a unique entity in it. Most of the maintenance money and everything that's spent is spent on the rest of the trail, not on us. We do our own ninety percent of our own maintenance. The only thing that we look for from the Conservation Authority is major items like the bridges. Okay, and the bridge at Yarker has a deteriorating deck on it. And if anybody's familiar with the railroad bridge at Yarker, if it goes now, snowmobiles and everything else will have to go down through the village and across the river. So there is a a project in the works to replace that deck. Estimated estimated a couple of years ago at a little over a hundred thousand. We have thirty thousand with the ten thousand here in the budget. The Skadu Club also has some money that they can put into it. Hopefully, our thirty and hopefully the Skadu Club's thirty, I will say it that way, would give us a hundred and twenty thousand at fifty percent dollars. So that's what we're aiming for, is to have enough to repair that bridge. They did chafes locks two years ago for a hundred thousand, and it's about eighty percent of the length of that bridge, so it's a little bit shorter.
Okay, carry on.
Thanks, Doug. Into two thirty, building inspection, two thirty forty six oh two account, building permits. We're projecting three hundred and ten thousand dollars in revenues in twenty twenty four. You can see the numbers from twenty twenty three, budgeted numbers were a little less than what we actually saw, which is always good. And we saw a fairly ma major project take be underway. Conditional permits were issued twenty twenty three with some additional permits that'll be needed to get kicked out the door in twenty twenty four. So we're expecting some some revenues on that front as well. Septic, again, eighty thousand. We were fairly close last year, eighty five five, eighty. We expect similar volumes in twenty twenty four. Because septic has multiple aspects of it, right? That's, that's comment through technical review processes on planning applications. It's also the actual install and replacement of an existing septic system. So it's not just, it's not just tied to new lock creation, for example. Moving on to wages, fifty one oh one. Two hundred twenty six thousand, roughly quarter million. We have included a portion of multiple positions in this. Fifty percent of Development Services Clerk, hundred percent of C B O, hundred percent of Building Inspector, ten percent of Compliance Coordinator, ten percent of Manager Development Services, and ten percent of an administrative, an executive administrative position that would potentially be a new position subject to this budget. All to support that department. Those revenues look fairly hefty and and impressive, but it takes more than one or two staff to to pull that revenue in into the corporation. So that's where we're looking, that's what we're looking to do.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Jason, how did you arrive at these percentages? What what was the criteria to determine?
Through your revise, counsel, that's a great question. It it's really to try and actually reflect the day to day and weekly output of a position. So fifty percent of, for example, the Development Services Clerk is is generally tied to supporting the building department. You know, that's not issuing permits and inspecting projects in the field, but that's generally supporting the department in the administrative capacity and setting up the planning process to ensure that the building department is suited. The other thing that I should have noted before I got this far, and I apologize. The building department's to operate at revenue neutral, and and our C B O is here tonight, he can speak to it in greater detail than I. But essentially, the legislation is that your your building department is not to generate great folds of revenue for your corporation. Your permit value and your staffing complement are to be aligned so that your your input and your output on the financial figures are are consistent. So if, for example, if we asked Jake to work eighty hours a week and didn't give him any support and took all of his money that he made for us and started spending it elsewhere, that's contrary to the to the to the act. So we're, we're trying to make sure that we're supporting that department insofar that we have enough staff to be sustainable. And we're also not misallocating funds in any aspect that would be contrary to the act. That feeds into my next point really well here at fifty nine hundred and rent. We're charging the department rent and overhead, and that's to support our 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 operations and output of that department. So this was introduced a year or two ago in terms of our existing operations, and we've doubled our staffing. We've increased our support for the department. So we're looking at increasing what they are compensating the general sort of the the general rate payer or the or the corporation as a whole in in providing that service to us at a at a contribution of forty eight thousand dollars annually.
Just a quick question, is that rent going into a reserve?
Yep. The the slide before you, two forty, two six, two fifty, two sixty, two seventy, two eighties, all sort of packed together. We've done that in the past. I'm not a huge fan. That being said, none of these are massive line items that are going to make any change, any significant change to our budget, in my opinion. But there are two notable pieces on this slide that I want to bring our attention to. Twenty five hundred dollars, and it may seem very menial in 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 our discussion today, but administrative monetary penalties, we talked about that lot a fair amount in the past year or two. We've, we've brought in, in terms of revenue, twenty five hundred dollars in two months. So in November and December of twenty twenty three, that's what we saw on the on the financial component side of of having that in effect. Not counting the actual compliance with our bylaw side of it. So when they're not generating compliance and we get to sort of hit them financially, we'd see the positives on the financial side and better allocation of actually achieving compliance. So I wanted to point that out because we're fairly happy with what we've seen in the field as well as on the payroll side. The second component, jump to the bottom, twenty six, two hundred, the two six The second component, jump to the bottom, twenty-six, uh two hundred, the two sixty fifty-two hundred, the services line item is a fifteen thousand dollar increase um to the typical fifteen hundred dollar amount that you would see for civic addressing, budgeting in the corporation. And the reason that we're, that we're including that additional fifteen thousand is to secure um some additional help in getting us over this phase one of private lane uh work that was completed in two thousand and eighteen. Am I right? I'm looking at these guys nineteen. I, I'm just gonna let, let Jeff and James give a quick overview on this because I, I wasn't. And it, to me, it's very important and I, I wanted to draw some attention to it in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, so there was, there's been work done over the years. Um, we have a number of private lanes throughout the municipality. Phase one and two were done in the Beaver Lake sort of area um where we actually named the private lanes and addressed them properly. And it's all to do with um accuracy and nine-one-one uh dispatch to that. Uh, currently, if you have a address off a private lane and it's A to Z, um, in a dispatch system, your address would show up on a map at the main address right out on the road. So those long laneways, it's hard for us to pinpoint exactly where you are. So what this pro- project would do um is build on the work that's been done in the past and um provide the addressing blades and, and whatnot, um as well as all the notice to the citizens um on those private lanes, um all the GIS work that has to be done to update all the records and then name all the rest of these private lanes and get that project done and over with.
Thanks, James.
I just have a question in regards when someone's asking for a civic number. Do we charge, do we have any fee process for giving someone that, that number?
Yeah, so I believe a replacement is twenty dollars. Um, so if your blade gets destroyed or stolen, um, then you can request it through the public works office to have it replaced for twenty dollars. And that's simply to cover the cost of that blade.
Yeah, when the lots originally created, what, is there a fee for that? I can't remember.
Yeah, it's two fifty with the, the entrance permit. That's where that happens. Um, so the, the entrance is inspected by the public works department and then the civic address is created and registered in the system.
Just Wendy, was that what you were?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And just to add to that, the blade is twenty dollars. If we have to go and install it, it's one twenty um for replacement. And that's in our fee bylaws, but uh we probably should increase that.
Okay.
That's a different uh topic coming.
Okay. Anything else on that? Okay, Jason.
Jeff can leave his mic on. We're into the three hundred roads administration and this is it. This is his, this is his world. Yeah, yeah, so the three hundred forty-three, the three hundred and the four, the forty-three hundred count, the, the grants federal. Um, again, this ties to a summer job application. From there with those, we're trying to, trying to hire two summer students to support our roads department. We've been doing it for several years uh in the summer months. The, the next line at three hundred forty-three oh four is a pits and quarries. This is a, a consistent, again, five thousand dollars, all the, all the aggregate that leaves our municipality that basically is trucked out on our road system and taken away and hitting our roads. Um, we get a, we get a stipend to, to make sure that we're covered, in a sense, financially for any repair uh to that, to that road system. No, no, it's a no, but it, is that not the, that's the intent, that's the intent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. Um, the three hundred forty-four oh eight services to others, uh again, public works manager can speak to it better than I, but it, we extend beyond our jurisdiction in some occasions uh and, and help our neighbors where it's logical to do so. Um, and we're compensated on a, on a time and material basis for that, for that work. That's all done through uh contractual agreements that we have in place with, with our neighbors. And we, we receive those benefits on other aspect, on other areas, I believe, too.
Just to interject, the actual revenue there, that doesn't include what we've uh, we're invoicing Addington Highlands for twenty twenty-three. No, it should be around forty grand.
This is the first, first meeting of three. So we'll make sure we have that looked at for the twentieth meeting and, and make note that we may see some change to the three hundred forty-four oh eight account.
And I know that because we just didn't waste them not very long ago.
So it might have been captured because we're
It's just not paid yet.
A month into the new year and it wasn't.
That's right.
It wasn't, didn't come through. Yeah. Um, three hundred fifty-one oh one wages, full-time. Six hundred ninety thousand dollars to our roads department staff, essentially. That's, again, we talked about it before with the three percent increase to the corporation on, on salary. Um, that's being considered. The actual in twenty twenty-three was higher. We've had some changing in staff. We've, we've had some new members join. Um, public works manager can speak to it better than I.
So through all the accounts, so this, this um, this account might have been at seven fifty-eight last year. As actuals, but we've allocated in every account to cover the full-time wages and benefits. So the three hundred might be down, three twenty might be up, you know, the waste, the four oh three through four oh one, they might be up or down. Anyway, the wages are covered, so don't think that it's a decrease in wages. We've increased to what we've projected for the three percent and benefits. They're just allocated differently.
That's four and two, so we're looking for six students for the roads department? On the previous page, you were looking for two on forty-three hundred? Just, just, so are we looking for four or six? Six would be great if we can get them, but.
I'll, I'll let Anita answer that, but two, two for the roads.
Okay.
But she'll answer the, the rest.
Sorry, three, wait, wait, Wise. That is uh the forty-three hundred, is that the grant money for the two students that we're expecting to get? And uh the fifty-one oh two is actually the expense for them.
Services, fifty-two hundred. Uh, forty thousand dollars, consistent with what we've seen in the past. We have the annual inspections on hoist, cranes, et cetera, for the maintenance of our operations in our, in our road, public works garage, sorry. Um, and we don't see any change to that from previous years. Uh, we touched on legal previously on council's front and public works sees their share of legal matters as well, so ten thousand dollars. Much of that is associated with survey work and legal work, you know, on, on ensuring that we have roads that are actually on the right of way and not extending on a private properties, et cetera. So we, they pop up and we, we don't plan for them. So we're working on those as we, as we go. Conventions and training, road school, public, public work staff attend annually, good roads conferences, uh our public work staff attend annually. Um, we see that increasing five thousand dollars from last year, uh twenty thousand um because we actually spent just shy of twenty-five thousand last year. So that's why your slight increase on the, on the conventions and training. Three-ten account, three-ten fifty-three hundred, maintenance and repairs. You, you can see from last year, a twenty, two-hundred fifty thousand dollar budgeted item, we spent two-hundred seventy-five and we're looking at two-hundred seventy this year just to ensure we're, we're more accurately aligned. And that's fluctuating on what breaks and what needs to be, what needs to be fixed. The fifty-seven forty capital vehicles, fairly large line item, one point one million, two plow trucks, one crew cab, one half-ton patrol truck. Um, how that, uh and some random, I don't want to say random, some add-ons uh that may go with each of those trucks. The, the one thing I do want to point out is those two trucks, the bigger trucks were budgeted in twenty twenty-three, but however not purchased. Um, and I think this is another good point to pause and let public works manager give us some insight based on the the, the aspect and the size of this number.
Do we have any questions first? Uh, you're gonna beat John on the question.
The crew cab, is there an electric version of that?
I get that every year from you and I was expecting Reeve Wise to answer, ask that one.
No, I'm gonna ask you about the patrol truck.
It's the same thing, electric. So through you, Reeve Wise, yes, uh, or I'm gonna say no. There's no consideration for EV for the patrol truck. Um, just the mileage we put on in a twenty-four hour period, even a hybrid doesn't make sense for us. Um, we can put on two hundred and fifty kilometers in a, in a night. And then we expect uh, you know, six-thirty in the morning that it's used for daily use, too. So there's no uh charge time, but as technology gets better and charging time gets better, I can see before I retire that, that we'll have that. Now, on the other hand, we do have um something that we have a truck that's in, uh getting repaired for the last four months that can't seem to get a motor for, and it's two thousand nineteen. Um, we're in discussions to, in a Jake's world of uh getting a Lightning truck uh fully EV, so this would be above the budget number that we have. Um, it'd be something I would bring back. And that would be something we can maybe not put into a patrol, but we just put it into a daytime fleet vehicle and test it out and see how many kilometers we can get out of it and, um, stuff like that and trade in the vehicle that's there now. So hopefully we get a decent dollar amount for the vehicles there, but the other thing on the Elet EV, um it's an eight-year or a hundred and fifty kilometer warranty on the batteries. That's one year for us. We put a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand kilometers on a vehicle in a year, so. But I, yeah, I can take questions on, on the rest of the information in the uh, the capital vehicle purchase. But again, this is all out of reserves. I think we, we have a pretty healthy reserves that we build up, so. In the tandems, yes, they were to be tendered in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three. Um, and we're just starting to work on going through canoe and, and doing that, purchasing now of the tandems.
Okay, any, any other questions for Jeff on the trucks? It would be interesting, uh, just, just to see a breakdown at some point, Jeff, and this isn't urgent uh for this budget process on the upfront costs, the operating costs, the, the warranty considerations uh on EVs, generally speaking, for you, for your department. I know it makes sense for the building department. But it is something we're going to be faced with down the road to, to budget for, so some, some sort of monitoring that would be useful for council, I think.
Right, through you, uh Reeve Wise, I think if uh we can't get a motor for this two thousand nineteen vehicle that we have uh sitting, I can bring something back and it would be a good caveat going forward of uh, you know, and, and not be in a frontline truck, but a, be in what it is for day-to-day work, right?
Yeah. Uh, final point on the slide, three-ten fifty-nine oh one, transfer reserves, just shy of half a million dollars. This is budgeted on last year's actuals. I don't know if there's any questions, but again, Jeff's a better person than I. Onto the next slide, three-twenty, uh roads construction capital. So on the, on the, on the federal funding or grants front, uh the CCBF, Canada Community Building Fund, which was formerly the gas tax, um, we're looking at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, just shy of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The one oh eight, if I can, I think that's the Dewey Road Construction Project, just as an FYI, for those of you following that through that. So it's not as though that we're paying it off on the twenty twenty-five, but it comes out of our, what we receive from the CCBF funding. So it's not necessarily that we're, we're paying that off. We're paying it off, but we're not seeing it go out the same way that you might envision. The three-twenty forty-three oh one grants provincial, just shy of three hundred thousand dollars, this is our OCIF. It's more significant in terms of its loss from last year. It's fifty, fifty-two thousand dollars. So maybe another question for, for our MP on uh where, where, where are we going on the trend here? Sure, some of my colleagues are taking notes, we can make sure we get that as well. Three-twenty forty-nine oh one, transfer reserves, eighty thousand dollars. You've seen this for three or four years running. It's not yet done, move into hydro relocation at Central Quarry. Um, it's a bit misleading, it, that eighty thousand is to remove or relocate the hydro. I say it's misleading because it's more encompassing than that. We need ministry approvals to expand our quarry operation or to, to actually, to then move the hydro line over so we can continue with the aggregate extraction. So that's why you're seeing this get bumped and bumped and bumped, because it takes, there's a lot of work that goes into expanding that from an MECP's approval as opposed to just relocate the hydro, so if, if there's questions.
So basically saying that we're gonna continue budgeting it until the time that it happens so that it's not a surprise when it does, so.
Thank you. And just to be clarified, it's not being budgeted, it was budgeted in three years ago. It just keeps getting not spent and going into reserves and back out again. Yeah, so we're not asking the taxpayer every year for that amount.
Uh, final point, thirty-two, or three-twenty forty-nine oh two, transfer from reserve fund of five hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. This is, this is unique uh in the sense that this is essentially uh gas tax money or CCBF money that the municipality has received, this five hundred thousand, five hundred and twelve thousand, over the past three or four years, that was really un, it wasn't captured. It didn't come in as a clean fund. Um, so we, I'll say our treasurer, Anita, has done a lot of work in, in tracing this and has essentially found that those dollar figures in our budget, uh, or sorry, in our, in our revenues that we're able to use in supporting our twenty twenty-four budget um for, for road construction projects, it's all to what it was to be spent on. It's just, it wasn't like a, a twenty twenty-four line item, we're gonna receive X on a gas tax. Uh, here it is, it was just additional funds that we found that we're able to utilize. So we see that as a very big uh, a, a big support in our ability to drop that, that hit on our rate payers for twenty twenty-four because of that nearly half a million dollar number. And Jeff might want to expand upon what I said.
Go ahead, Jeff. Unless Adina wants to elaborate, but there was two years, I believe, they doubled the gas tax and uh no, go ahead. Two years they doubled the gas tax and uh I wasn't aware of it. And that was uh, I believe, like twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one? Twenty twenty-one. Um, so it just kind of got funneled into a different account and Anita found it this year, so.
So, so yeah, where, where was it? What, was it sitting in investments or something? I, I don't quite understand how it wasn't accounted for or identified.
Through you, Reeve Wise, it is a separate uh bank account, which is a fund and uh it's if the gas tax isn't used, then it is supposed to be sitting in a fund where you can actually make uh revenue on it. And they actually record the interest from it. But in twenty twenty-one, there was a surplus in money that they doled out to municipalities with an extra funds and a few rollovers plus accumulated interest by the end of twenty and a few rollovers plus accumulated interest by the end of 2023. We have this, a large amount of money sitting there and I was just asking a bunch of questions on how it was. And as I'm going through the files and doing the budget and talking to Jeff, it wasn't found, it was always there, but it wasn't known by everybody. So it was a group effort, as the budget has been, and we all worked together to find and attach the costing where it should be.
That, that's great, it's just almost mind-boggling that that sort of disappeared somehow.
We just get to spend it now.
Yeah, well, it's a good thing, I mean, with, with the SCBA, is that the right word, right acronym? Hit, this really helps to cushion the blow, so yeah, good work. Okay, that's great, go ahead, Jason.
3205311, so granular material. $180,000 applicable to crushing. So it's funded in both of our operating capital and we're looking at nearly a quarter of a million dollars in total. And that's applied to our pits and quarries that we, we own as a corporation and we use for our, for our roads. 5312 Surface Treatment, 450,000. I think, I shouldn't say I think, the big item this year is Freeman Road in terms of resurfacing. So that's what we're looking at. Ensuring is completed within the calendar year. And the 5316 account has an engineering allocation of $60,000. And that's really the paperwork aspects on going into some of these, making some of these things become a reality. So Flynn Bridge Replacement, Large Culvert Replacement on Mountain Road, the, the street reconstruction project around the Tamworth or the Stone Mills Recreation Center, Peel Street, Addington, Mill Pond Drive. Any questions on that slide? There's some big numbers there.
Sorry, can I intervene? Sorry to intervene, we're going to be having a computer shutdown for updates that we thought we could postpone for a couple of hours, but it's not letting us, so that is going to cut our live streaming here shortly. So if I can just ask if we can take like a five, 10-minute recess so we can get our IT equipment sorted and then back up and livestreamed. We, yeah, yeah.
Thanks. Last slide before a bit of a recess, Roads Construction Capital continued, that'll finish us off before we get into the 324 accounts. The 3205750 is a road, it's called Roads Linear, just shy of $2 million. It relates to our, essentially a lot of our public works projects for the year. And, and it's what, a third of our budget? I mean, this is, this is the big, the big one. So large culverts on Mountain Road, Freeman Road Surface Replacement, Reconstruction, et cetera, sidewalk, cash vault, curbs, everything around the rink, that work's been done, the drawings are in. So we, we want to make sure that we get this underway before the, before the recess, because this is, this is probably the biggest slide in the, in the deck. And Jeff can provide any further info than I.
That's through you Reeve Wise, that's good, Jason, any questions on those projects?
You be able to complete both of them, Peel and Addington? Or will it just be a certain number of blocks?
I believe, I'm just getting the quantities and stuff now from the engineer. We had actually drawings done two years ago. But we're working on getting the quantities now and I believe we can complete that project ourselves within the year, calendar year.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, Wendy?
Is this going to impact any businesses? I know when the county did the road work, it, it really impacted some businesses.
We're, not to put the county down or contractors, but when we do it ourselves, we don't impact businesses. So the only business there is our rink and LCBO that would be affected, so we can close everything else in, in sections. With the LCBO, we'd have to leave that open in the Legion. But we will work with them.
Anyone else? Okay, then we're going to have to have a little recess so that staff can identify this IT issue and shut down. People who are watching live stream, I'm sorry, this is unavoidable. There'll be another budget meeting, we'll go over all this.
Thanks Reeve Wise. Carrying on to where we left off, Roads County Administration, 324 accounts. First account in our presentation, 3244407 is our services to the county. As council will be aware, we provide a significant amount of services from our lower, as a lower tier to our upper tier, to the county, on our county road systems, just north of a million dollars in terms of costs. And that's based on, there's a 10% fluctuation built in that, and this is really unchanged from 2023. We saw the successes in that in 2023 and we're projecting it to be no different for 2024. The 3245101 is wages full-time, $239,000. Again, that's what our staff are projecting to be costing to get that maintenance done, the roughly million dollars worth of maintenance on our county road system in our, in the capacity of our full-time staff. Moving to our, to our part-time staff, nearly 69, nearly $70,000. It looks like a huge discrepancy from 2023 budgeted to actuals, and that's just a difference in the way that the coding and allocation of funding was, was completed. So again, you, you can see that 53,000 more aligned with what we're projecting for 2024 that, that we see to be the, the accurate number going toward, to the county in terms of part-time staffing. If there's any questions, Jeff can help us out on that, if not, I'll carry forward. Machine time, 5304, and township equipment, again, we, we use this to our, to our county, to support our county, $362,000 of it. And just be mindful, there's fluctuation in that, given our unknowns in terms of what pops up and crops up. 5310, Salt and Sand, $250,000. We split at a 50/50 rate with our county in terms of sand. And with respect to salt, it's a 70/30 split with the township and county in terms of those total costs. That takes us through Roads County Administration, Township of Landfills, we've looped them all together. Camden East, Newburgh, Sheffield, Moscow, $15,000 into our 40401, 406, 407, 408 accounts. We are proposing and planning a Household Hazardous Waste Day 2024. And that comes to the expense of $60,000. So we've got 30 budgeted in 20, we had budgeted, sorry, $30,000 in 2023. And we're budgeting the 30,000 in 2024 so that we can pay for that service. Spring 2024, date to be determined.
Wendy.
I actually have some suggestions, I wrote down, look at Jeff's file. I don't know if this at all is possible, but once a year, Napanee and Drainall, I know the township is involved with Drainall, has a waste management. And I just was thinking, is there any way we could partnership with Drainall? And possibly people that want to go to waste management through our new website, maybe go on and fill out a form saying we would like to go to Napanee Waste Management when they have it. And then they could bill us for the receipts they get. And maybe we could even charge $10 for the waste management receipt that they print off or they take a picture of and they give to Drainall. Now, if you don't like that idea, I do have another one. Is it possible, if Drainall doesn't want to work with us and it's too much waste, to maybe once a year, maybe at the Camden East site, have a couple of dumpster containers? And say in September, October, I'm thinking of cottagers when they're finished with their paints and their stuff, that we could have them just designated on Wednesdays and Saturdays, maybe to bring in some, bring in their waste? And maybe we could pay extra for the fire department guys, because they know how to put those waste things, know how to store them in those containers. And that way we wouldn't be putting extra work on our current people. So these are a couple, if we could do it ourselves, or maybe get in partnership with Drainall. Just a couple of thoughts and that, it's just, I know the work that you guys put into having a waste management day and you do an amazing job. It's a lot of work and I thought, well, maybe there's, there are other ways, just something to think of.
Through you Reeve Wise, great questions, great ideas, and we've looked into them. We've looked into them, that's why I know they're great ideas. So your, your first one, we've, so Drainall does, typically they won our last one between Brendar and Drainall. They were the only two that bid the Household Hazardous Waste Day. And Drainall won, and as long as I've been here, Drainall's been the one. And as long as I've been here, Drainall's been the one that has been awarded the contract. We questioned if we can have our residents go to Napanee and go through their line, and it was too much of a paperwork issue and tracking for them because we get funding back, and Napanee gets funding for what they produce. So for Drainall and their staff to track that was just too much of a task because we put through, I think we put through 500, 600 vehicles here in, you know, three hours. So it's a busy time. And we found that doing it every year, there's, I don't think we have the need for that. Maybe as we grow, we'll have the need, but because you're paying for your, their staff, you're paying for their vehicles, you're paying our staff. So regardless of how many you have come through there, you still have that capital cost in that year, right? With very, and if you have lower quantities, you don't get the revenue back. The next question about the landfills, we looked at Brendar, and it's on our website. They have a place in Bath, they have a place in Strathcona, or South Frontenac. We looked at putting a permanent site in Camden East and had them do up a quote to see what it would look like. So we would have to have our staff trained to handle the hazardous waste materials. So our fire department wouldn't be able to do it. It would have to be their staff, or we would have to train staff to be able to handle that. And then it's a change of CVA through the environment and for storage, too. So we have to have a facility down there to store it. So that's why we kind of promote it, if people don't want to hang on to that, you know, paint can or, paint cans actually, as long as the paint's dry, we can take it in our scrap. But, you know, oil and stuff like that, that's why if they don't want to hang on to it, they can drive to Bath and take it to Brendar. I hope I answered that question, kind of, no. But if you want, we can, we can review those avenues again, but we actually did it two years ago before the last hazardous waste day.
Okay, Wendy, go ahead.
What, you said Bendark, and do we have that posted on our website, these options, or that option?
Brendar, so, yeah, so B-R-E-N-D-A-R, I believe, and it is on our website under the waste. And anyone that calls about hazardous waste, we, we give them the contact. And actually on their flyer, and they promote stone mills, so.
So just, so I'm clear of the structure of this, it seems to be this way, but I just want to make sure. So we, we sign up for, like you said, we get, we put it out, not quite for tender, I guess it's for a question proposal. And you said that we've only ever had one company successful consistently, which is interesting how it works. Now, and it doesn't matter how much quantity we get that day, they just throw a number at it, and they kind of roll the dice on roughly the resident population and previous participation, and that's the number they give. So it's certainly to our advantage to make sure we get as many people getting as much of their stuff out as possible. Is, is there ever been an approach where we say to that company, the one company that does seem to want to be part of it, if we were to commit to an 18-month cycle, would you be doing it for 45 grand? Would you do it? Because they know that there would be less quantity. It would be logical. Has ever, ever been thought that maybe a consistent bargain with them, where it's instead of this one-shot deal every so often would result in, I mean, it would still cost more overall, but it would be more consistent for the residents? Has that ever been approached?
Through you, Reeve Wise, no, that hasn't been approached, but that's something that we can discuss within this year on the, the winning RFP, so. Yeah.
Anything else on this section of waste? Go ahead, Jason.
Thanks, Sean. Second bullet point, speaking to part-time wages, $113,535.88 has increased that 3% from our 2023 salaries for our waste attendants. And the last point is noteworthy from a public perspective. In council, what's been included within this budget is an increase of $1 per bag in 2024. Not maybe so noteworthy for public, but what we're also recommending is opposed to the 50% revenue, 50% of the revenue going into reserves. We're proposing 2/3 of the revenue of the $3 per bag go into reserves. And the reason that we're proposing to increase this is the increased costs associated with landfill liability and remediation. And you'll, you may recall from last fall's report with our pension, our engineer pension and engineering firm completed the assessment, it went up over $1 million. So we want to try to get ahead of bolstering our reserves in the event that one of these needs remediation into the future, that we were not then coming to the taxpayer at a significant hit as it relates to making sure that we're going to fulfill our obligation to, to that requirement. So for that reason, we're proposing twofold here, to increase cost of bags, but we're also proposing to increase allocation to our reserves.
Just a quick question, how many bags do we sell in a year?
Oh, now you put me on the spot.
Through you, Reeve Wise. At $2, we spent 100, sold $181,000 of them, there you go, last year. And at $3 for 2024, we'd project $238,500.
And the bags were, I think, 52, if I remember right, 52,000? No, the individual bags. I think that was your question, right? How many bags? Yeah, okay, yeah. Perfect.
Sorry, Jeff, I jumped in there. I was excited for that question.
Perfect, you have it right in front of you, so.
510, jump into Parks and Recreation, transfer from reserves. We've got four bullet points, we'll walk through these. So that it's, again, full detailed assessment and breakdown. Camden East Parket, we're all familiar, the corner of Kenner Road 1 and Kenner Road 4. It was deferred because of a public works project and widening, and we weren't, you know, we weren't sure exactly where it was going to land. We've allocated $115,000 towards that project. The design's done, and our Public Works Department is planning to do that work in-house to save us some costs, and the rev, and the project would be funded from the reserve account that we got based on the insurance proceeds. Second to that, we, we had a, we found a little live reserve, Camden East Library Reserve, $27,000, plus or minus. And we want to use that to support the redevelopment of that site, given that it's the same site. We don't know what else it would be used for, and we think that's the most best use of it. So again, to our, to our treasurer finding reserves that we think could be offsetting some of the building reserves that would go towards that, that $27,000 proposal. I might have a question from Doug.
I didn't have a question, I was just looking pencil, but I, I can tell you what that reserve was. It was the old library building, the brick was deteriorating on the back of it, and over a number of years, we had to do some pointing on it, and so we put away a little money for future repairs, that's what it was.
I'm just, I haven't seen the plans in a while, and I've forgotten. There was some talk of building a little free library on there, like, which is an organization all across the world. You build these little libraries about this big with books in them, people can take one, put one in.
Through you, Reeve Wise, yeah, we, we have that plan at the staff level to spread throughout our township. We want to see that as a, as essentially a public open space initiative. So for example, if you're attending the Tammer's Skate Park with your children or grandchildren, you might want to pick a book up and, and look at that as well. So we see that as, yes, being appropriate in that, in that structure, or, sorry, on that site, but also on other sites throughout our community, and it's something we're going to look to try and pull off in 2024. Next bullet point, Camden East Conservation Park. Recently found out there's a well that we're not really overly excited to have on that site in terms of liability concern, so we're looking to decompose, decommission that well, sorry, and essentially make it no longer a health concern.
Where is the well?
Through you, Reeve Wise, unless Jake knows, but it's on the western side of the park, next to the property owner. Can't think of their name right now, but not very far off the road allowance either.
Oh, is that righty? So is there a, an old dug well? Yeah, yeah, interesting, okay, thanks.
The third bullet point in terms of Parks and Recreation, the Yarker Riverside Park. We are proposing to essentially bolster it, the playground equipment within that park through some, the use of a reserve, playground equipment reserve, the library Yarker Reserve. I forget the total amount, I thought it was 70... I don't know, jump in.
Through you, Reeve Wise, yeah, a total of $75,000 earmarked for that Yarker Riverside Park. And it's just some age, I don't know if staff's aware of, they've been in that park recently, but not a lot of new equipment there, so.
Just one thing on that, I think it's great, I have small kids taken there, it is in rough shape. One thing that would be interesting, if we have the capacity to do it, would be some form of community engagement around what is that park going to look like? And what might, because it's not going to be just used by the people in Yarker, but it would be nice to do a bit of community engagement to ask people if they have any input, since it is a public shared space, and sometimes getting that input designs it better for everybody in the community, and also just make people feel like they are involved in the process. I don't know what that might look like, I'd be happy to knock on doors in the spring for that very reason, but something, some piece of community engagement about what that park might look like, I think would be really beneficial and important.
Thank you, Chris, Councilor Woodcock, appreciate it. We, we actually held a, a community consultation process for the other parket in, in the village, and it was well received, and we received significant input, and we were able to, I think, really address most of that input through that process. So I don't see a concern with doing something similar as it relates to the redevelopment of that, of that Riverside Park as well.
I can't remember if I brought this up before in the past, but something that's very popular, I guess you could say, are things called sun sails, and they build them over structures like children's playgrounds just to protect them from the hot sun. And some of our playgrounds are like right out, and they're very exposed with no trees. Is that something you might be considering this year?
Through Reeve Wise, that actual Riverside, the Yarker residents can say it's actually well-treed and well-shaded, probably that's not the one that's, that's requiring the sun shade. Oh, no, I'm talking about the Yarker Riverside Park right now. That's where the money's earmarked in this, in this proposed budget. So I wasn't thinking sun shade for this project. Yeah, I, I'm not a parks expert, but there's a lot of new studies out there right now suggesting that maybe the classic old, you know, chunk of plastic for the kids to kind of climb on isn't exactly, A, the one that the children would rather climb on and be the best for their health, and maybe something more natural or more something that was more typical of something children used to play on generations ago. And there's, there's a lot more options, a lot more studies out there, and, and a lot more alternatives than there was maybe 20 years ago when we just went to a magazine and just ordered a chunk of plastic kind of out of a magazine. And sure, I think we should definitely do some community engagement. I know that what I'm suggesting is probably where I'm leaning, but anyways, that's the best I can do at this point.
Okay, that's a discussion for another time, I think, but it's interesting. Go ahead, Jason.
The final bullet part, point in 5051, 5104901, sorry, is the Newburgh Ball Field, $15,000 exterior lighting upgrade. We have a reserve account with $15,000 in it that we're proposing to utilize and essentially upgrade for, for that safety of ball players using that field, given the age of our, our existing lighting. We're confident it can be completed for, for that number. With respect to the, I, I'm not going to go through it in detail because I think we've, we've done so, but in terms of where the reserves and the funds are coming from, the transfer from reserves to pay for some of this stuff has, has been delineated. And we also just want to make note, and it'll come up further again, is a tree planting program. We've, we've, I don't know if it's really written, but it's maybe an unwritten policy or process that we've been abiding by and following here within our corporation is trying to dedicate $10,000 or more to planting of trees and, and working towards the greening of our community over the years. And we're proposing to utilize another $10,000 from our Parkland Reserve Fund, which is sitting healthy, to increase our municipal facilities from, from the planting of trees.
I'm just wondering if there's any looking into, a lot of these projects are capital, if there's any looking into Trillium funding this year, or have we exhausted that?
Yes, through Reeve Wise, Trillium funding, I've tried twice now for this Yarker Riverside Park, to get funding for this Yarker Riverside Park, and I'm just tired of writing the grant applications to Trillium for that, so. I guess we'll have to kick the Trillium grants that we're going to get down the road because since I've gotten that one for the Tammers Arena, I haven't been successful, so. And I'm not sure if the Trillium grants are more kind of gauged toward not playgrounds or what the case is, but just that's where I've been trying to get Trillium funding for playgrounds, and I just, I just haven't had any success lately, so. Happy to answer more questions.
Okay.
Parks and Recreation continued, 5105101, wages full time. $32,000, just shy of $500. We want to be representative as to what our, our main municipal employee that's dedicated to parks and recreation has been attributing, and that's 5/12 of the year. The other 7/12 of the year is in the arena, so that's, you'll see that elsewhere through this budget. With regards to part-time wages, we are typically that fund summer students, and we're proposing to add three summer students, so two in public works and three in Parks and Recreation. And, and again, just maybe more so from the varied interests and career development opportunities for summer students, we allow or, or try to work with, allowing them opportunity to see different aspects of municipal operations. So it's not only to say that if you're hired as a Parks and Recreation student, you're not going to see anything in the public work side and vice versa. So although they're maybe on paper shown that way, that's a little bit less so in reality. We are also proposing to pickle, increase our pickleball programming in the Tammers or the Stone Mills Recreation Center this year, and we really want to utilize a student to be the main, the main township representation at that facility for the operations of that, of that programming as opposed to our arena supervisor, which of course is compensated at a more significant dollar figure than a, than a student.
Just on pickleball, have you budgeted the, the fee for pickleball? I think it was $3 last year. What's, what's your proposal this year for that?
I actually have a scheduled meeting, I believe in March, with, I hadn't put like an exact number. My thought was more than three at this point, so.
That's fine, I get asked this every week at pickleball. It's told yesterday that Napanee is still going to be three, so.
Just a quick question, liability, what kind of liability do we have at the arena to cover participants in pickleball or any, any sport at all?
Ah, yes, through Reeve Wise, yeah, so the liability would be, I, I can't put a figure on it, but the same liability that the participants of public skating would be receiving when they walk through the doors to throw their skates on or go public skating. It's the same. It's the same policy. It's essentially the same thing. You're paying a fee to play pickleball. Instead of getting your skates on and, and getting going on the ice. And it would be really similar to renting the ice as a one-off for you and your buddies to play a game of ice hockey. And, and for those that don't know, we're actually starting Thursday, a new program that we just kind of came up with. Called Stick and Puck Hockey on Thursday afternoons at three-thirty, for those who are watching this, three-thirty to five. Where you just literally show up with your skates and your stick and maybe a pair of gloves and a helmet. And we throw the puck out on the ice and it's kind of like rink hockey. We don't really get a lot of weather for these outdoor rinks anymore. And a lot of kids miss out on just being out on the pond. And we were thinking we would try to mimic that in our arena. At a time when we weren't renting it and not making any money off the arena at that time anyways. So if you get the word out, hopefully we get some participants out on Thursday afternoons to sort of grow that program.
What are the age, what, what's the age expectation for that, that stick and puck hockey?
Yeah, through your replies, the age expectation is just like it used to be when I was a kid at the Enterprise Rink. You shared the puck with the little kids that came out and were trying to learn how to play hockey. And, uh, and it was just a free-for-all for old and young.
It's a great idea. Five bucks.
Five bucks.
A person. It can be adults too. Yeah, yeah. Oh, sorry. I thought you said a kid. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Not pertaining to budget stuff, but just a quick thought, people get a kick out of this. So I received a call from a gentleman. Who inquired about the possibility of renting the rec center in this on and off around pickleball to do roller skating. Which I don't know if this is going to grow legs. That's not a pun or not. And so I did contact Jake and we had a little chat about it. So I'm hoping that something like that would actually happen. It'd be really cool. But you know, people have dreams and I hope they come to fruition, but I thought everybody get a kick out of that. I thought, what a neat idea. You never know. So let's cross our fingers and that would be nice to utilize that for even more things during the summer.
Go ahead, Jake.
Uh, yes, through your replies, I've actually had a, a conversation with a gentleman that, that spoke to you. We have a meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks. He hasn't called me back. But definitely roller skating and pickleball were something that lived together in the town of Napanee for quite a while. And they lived together quite amicably, I think. And, um. And so I, I just think it's a great idea that we can basically mimic what we do with the pickleball. We have a student hired to work out of there this summer anyways, maybe just have one night per week. Maybe like opposite pickleball hours when they're already there, where they literally just move the pickleball nets. And you can do some skating for a bit with your roller skates and just see if, if the idea takes off, right? Anyways, uh, just, uh, I mean, the arena's sitting there all summer long. If we can make $5 a, a participant from something like that, I mean, let's try to make as much money. As possible out of something that's sitting there bought and paid for. That, that was my thought. So we're meeting with him. We're going to try to put something together. Similar to what we did with pickleball, maybe just, I mean, the appetite for roller skating probably isn't like the world of pickleball. That's just off the rails with popularity. But I mean, certainly there, there seemed to be a lot of popularity in roller skating in Napanee at one point in time, so. Uh, we'll see anyways. So it's a great idea, I think.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Wendy.
I know Napanee's now advertising for women's ball hockey. Is that something you'd entertain at the arena?
Hey, I think I'm going to cut it there. We're starting to talk about programming ideas. I think we want to stick to the budget. We, it's certainly worth considering at another time. Yeah. Carry on, Jason.
Thank you, Reeve Wise. Next slide, please. Just Parks and Recreation Continued, five-ten, fifty-two oh one. Materials and supplies, budgeting 30,000, typically budget 27,000. We're, we're proposing 30 this year to ensure we're covered. And I've already mentioned the 10,000 allocated towards planting of trees. Greening our community coming from our Parkland Reserve Funds. The five-ten, fifty-seven, ten account, the land improvement capitals are, are there on the screen. We've already overviewed each of those. And I also just, this is a slide that I struggled with. I probably should have had this at the start. These are the sums as to what I, what I was trying to get out. It's 115 to the parket, 75 to the park, Riverside Park and 15 to the ball field. Moving along, the five-thirteen account, swim program, there's been some conversation in the past, you know, 10, 12 months as it relates to the swim program. Historically, we've donated or we've budgeted, sorry, a $4,000 line item, $4,200 line item. Uh, and this year we're proposing to, in association with that 5802 account, we're proposing to add a 5211 account for conventions and training. And that $2,500 included within the conventions and training is to what we discussed at the council table. Regarding a sort of a lifeguard certification program and try to become a homegrown program that has sustainability year over year. As opposed to this, let's see if our program can run or not based on who we can get to run it. This is something that our staff have been working very closely with Mr. Atkins, who, who run, helps volunteer and run the program. So we are looking for essentially the inclusion of 2,500 for that purpose.
I just want to say, I think that's a great idea for long-term sustainability as, as it says.
Thank you. Stone Mills Recreation Center, fifty-three, five-thirty-six, sorry. The federal grants of just in, uh, just exceeding a million dollars have been applied for. And there's a breakdown of the fees that, where the funds would be allocated, sorry, should we be successful? To ranging from an EV charging station to a backup generator to ensure that, you know, for example, we're prepared and, and that can run as our, our. Our evacuation center in the event of emergency, uh, as well as to continue to attempt to make our building more sustainable. From a, from a heating and a heat loss point of view to an electric Zamboni. Related to that account, moving forward, fifty, uh, five-thirty-six, forty-nine oh one, the transfer from reserves. This is entirely related to that grant. So we're proposing $200,000 of our own funds, should we be successful in that grant? To make all of the above happen. So the idea is we pay 200 for a million, 1.2 in, uh, in total, total cost. Bottom line, five-thirty-six, forty-five hundred, the ice revenue rental, 170,000. You can see it's very aligned with the two thousand and twenty-three number of 176,000 dollars. And as we've gotten into, we are proposing to expand and try to bring some additional programming, just expand our opportunities and get some more interest in our community. So we're, we're, we're attempting to, to broaden what we're able to do on a revenue front as well. Full-time wages, the five-thirty-six, fifty-one oh one, you'll see that's the reciprocal of the five-twelfth of our parks. Arena supervisor slash Parks and Recreation staff wage. Five-thirty-six, fifty-one oh two is a part-time. Again, we've touched on it, but we have two facility operators that work at our arena. We have four attendees who are, are summers, not summers, they're students essentially that work throughout the winter months. And we're proposing one dedicated staff member for the lion, maybe not the lion's share, but from, for a portion of their summer. To at least be rotating through that facility based on what we're understanding that the, the requests are of the pickleball community. To run that and be our township representative. Just on a hydro costing front, the actuals in 2023 were $91,000. We're budgeting a very slight decrease. But again, we continue to try and be efficient. We did a fairly major overhaul recently on the capital infrastructure. New, new pad with insulation, et cetera. So we don't have enough time essentially on that to know what our drop would be on efficiencies. Our milder winters, for example, are contributing to that. So we're still budgeting a ninety, a $90,000 amount on the, on the hydro front. The five-fifty-six, the rooftop solar project, um, this is on the public works garage right across the parking lot in 2023. I think it was right around 81,000, yeah, 81,300. And we're budgeting roughly that again for 2024. Of every year it differs slightly depending on maintenance and service records and a little bit of degradation of, of the efficiency of the units. Yeah, snow coverage, et cetera. So that's, there's no significant change to any of that. General planning, 600 account. This is, this is always difficult to project. It's all applicant-driven, of course. And I, we're in a little bit of a turbulent time, just economy-wise, without really knowing what's happening interest rate-wise and et cetera. But all that being said, we're projecting six variance applications, so. Uh, that could be low, could be high, but I'm, I'm thinking that's probably going to be low. So we're, we're trying to be fairly conservative. In terms of consent applications, 50 of them are proposed. Last year we did 68, so 68,000 dollars in revenue. And this year we're, you know, if we can hit 50, it'd be $50,000. Zoning certificates, it's a very minor number, 20, 2500, 2900 is what we did in 2023. Nothing, nothing crazy there. With respect to wages, 90% of the manager development services salary and 50% of development services clerk, we've sort of touched on this. The other 10 and other 50 of those salaries would go to the building department to support that operation. From a legal cost line items, the 65203 account, we're budgeting $20,000. Again, this is a very challenging one to project because as we could see, when you have a blip. With respect to HR or, or legal matters or an appeal, it, it can really skew your numbers. So we haven't had that in, in years past at Ontario Land Tribunal hearing, at least in the last two or three years. But if we were to, to receive one, we could see this number being increased. The 65262 account is a consulting fee number, and this is a massive increase from what you've seen in years past. $20,000 was increased, was, was budgeted last year. We're, we're, we put a line item of 110,000. And that's a, to be frank, a very conservative number because it's the upset limit that's been discussed internally. Of what it could be from a support perspective on external consultants. I do not expect, we as staff do not expect that to be that number. But we don't know with respect to staffing, where and how much assistance we're going to need depending on. Leave of substances or, or workload backlogs, application volumes, that kind of thing. So for that reason, we, we, we budgeted to, to the upper, upper limit and, and we can make adjustments as, as needed moving through this process. That takes us through planning into the 700 account for property maintenance. A hundred thousand dollars for a fund, enabling accessibility fund. This has been, I believe, discussed that we are, are hoping to upgrade the Enterprise Community Hall with respect to accessibility. Uh, and that hope is dependent upon the successes of a fund, enabling accessibility fund grant. And if we're able to achieve that, we will be able to compensate the project in, um, through, through municipal. Municipal compensation of roughly $75,000, so 30 of it from a reserve. And a specific hall reserve in Enterprise and then 45,000 roughly from a general building reserve account. That would make the total cost of that project to be 175,000 with 100 of it being funded and then 75 out of, out of our reserve accounts.
Do you have any idea when you would hear back about this grant? What's the deadline for them to get back to you?
Through your replies, I don't have a date as to when we will. From what I understand, they're, the. They look, they're hoping to be the public announcement as opposed to it being released from a municipal perspective. And I don't know what their date, if you will, is. So we wanted to ensure that we were building it in for our, for our budgeting process into the, into the year. In the hopes that we are successful and able to complete it in the calendar year. But unfortunately at this time, Council on, I don't have a date. Moving along, 749 oh one, transfer from reserve, just in excess of 110,000. The community hall, sorry, the Newburgh and Enterprise Community Hall, we're looking at using. Just shy of $3,500 for an AED, automatic external defibrillator on the wall here behind you, behind us. An internal renovation at the Newburgh Fire Hall of $25,000. Enterprise Community Hall, which we talked about, $75,000. And the heat pump installation to try and garner some additional efficiencies in our Tammer's Fire Station. The next slide, 75200 account. Has a services line item of 130,000. It, uh, it, it's a general account. The services account is general, sorry, in, in nature and it, there's a whole host of, of. Expenditures that are coming from this account. The, the, sort of the unknown or the additional that might not have been seen in 2023 are the proposal. Or is the proposed expansion to this office? And we recognize that that's going to take time, but the first step is trying to understand conceptually what that would look like. So we've built in $10,000 to garner the complete, have the floor plan and elevation drawings completed. In working with staff to try and understand what expansions, opportunities could look like to this hall for our administration team. The 75720 Capital Building and Building Improvements of 210,000, uh, those are summed by the three items below. We've already touched on them, but that's the, that's the actual account code. So 175, 25 and 10. The machinery and equipment, $35,000 in, in that account is twofold. So tables and chairs that we're actually like sitting at today in this meeting, we're trying to get. We're trying to get some upgrades in terms of this setup, but we're also trying to balance that with what we do as a hall rental. Because we do rent this hall publicly. And we understand that in 2024, we are about to endeavor through a terms of reference process on hall rentals and what that looks like across our community. The increase, the demand for the rental of this hall has been declining, I would say, since I've been here and in, over the past five years. It's largely used for luncheons and they're one-off and/or a funeral service. However, we've increased, as you can tell, significant upgrades from an AV perspective. And we, this is, it's, it can be disruptive to our office environment if it's rented during the week, depending on the, the rental. So that's going to be something that we need to consider when we, when we work through that as to how that comes to be with respect to this hall. And I, I just want to, to express to council that we are cognizant of that. And recognizing that if we were to purchase, for example, a permanent table and chair setup, that that would become a challenge with a hall rental, should it wish be rented out. So we're trying to balance that, but we do think it, the time has come that we're, we need, we need to upgrade our, our council chambers from that perspective.
Just a quick question on that thought, Jason. As we're moving forward in the next year or so. With the possibility of an addition on the office, should, would we be wise just to hold off and see how everything fits together? Especially for the council chambers, I'm thinking. There may be some duplication of use.
Yeah, through your replies, we, and I'm, and I'm happy to say this publicly, I've, I've expressed my comment about the need for an office space. Sorry, a meeting space, a confidential meeting space. Obviously I, I do a lot of meeting, have a lot of meetings with applicants in, in this space. But when there's somebody in the kitchen, for example, or there's somebody coming in from outside, there's a, there's an element of confidentiality that I think lacks from that. So in the consideration of an office expansion, an ability to have a, a closed door meeting with a, with a nice office meeting area. Is something that we do want to look at. So I, I have no concern, Deputy Reeve, with sort of shelving that, if you will. And, and being mindful that what we do in an office setting, how that may impact this setting could be. And second to that is the terms of reference, right? I, I don't want to, like I said, it's hard to plan for this if we don't know what we're ultimately. And second to that is the terms of reference, right? I, I don't want to, like I said, it's hard to plan for this if we don't know what we're ultimately doing with the halls itself. So yes, we uh, we can make note of that. Item on that slide, sorry, uh, municipal office furniture is just a general, uh, looking to upgrade a couple of office, uh, chairs, uh, desks, et cetera, for our, for our new staff. Um, as well as any new staff that we may bring on in the next calendar year or this calendar year even. Um, just ensuring we have some, some item, some budgeted dollars to ensure that they have a space, space to work. Medical centers, seven oh one. Uh, seven oh one forty-four oh two is a lease agreement. Uh, so twenty-four thousand dollars is what we're expecting on the two centers. Seven oh one forty-nine hundred, internal transfer. Again, this is a community vibrancy, the portion of the community vibrancy uh, agreement funding or money or revenue that we're proposing to use to drill a well at our Newburgh Medical Center. Um, because currently that's serviced via Cistern.
I just wanted to ask um, about the Newburgh Medical Center. Now that the township owns it, is there a reason it has to go to a well? Um, the clinic's been there almost twenty-five years and we've never had an issue with the Cistern. Just a question.
Yeah, there's, uh, this is what we have budget meetings for, uh, Council Milligan. Um, if you're, if you're in favor of not doing that, I just thought that it, it would be something uh, a tangible upgrade to a building. It would be the only uh, Cistern uh, left in this municipality and uh, just, we don't have another building on a Cistern. Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to take more, you know, feedback from council if that's.
The, the main reason I ask is I just wondered um, if the money um, wouldn't be better utilized for recruitment or retention. Cause I mean, if we don't keep our doctors or get new doctors, we're not going to need the building at all. So um, and yeah. I mean, we don't drink the water, uh, but it's, when it was tested, we used to have to test it every three months. There was never an issue. We could drink it, we just don't. So.
Through, through your replies, Council Milligan, great, great point. The, the short answer is no, we're not at staff's level aware of a requirement legislatively to upgrade from a Cistern to a well. We were seen as to attempt to be proactive in a, in a, in a, in a way to ensure that we had a a marketable building, even if we had to, to secure a new tenant uh, from that point of view. Um, that being said, your comments respecting physician recruitment are duly noted, and I think you'll see that further on through our presentation this evening. We also have different ideas at staff's level as to where some funding could go in upgrading the building itself from a built form point of view. Um, some windows, some siding, some roofing, soffits, fascia. Um, obviously we did the structural component this summer. Um, there's going to be accessibility components because it's a publicly owned building. There's a, there is a host of opportunities, if you will, on where to spend some, some dollars on, on our facilities. This was, this was really a, a an option we came up with for discussion. So yeah, happy to, happy to discuss.
So just one more thing, it just, just reminded me that um, the, the one thing, like you'd never get a wheelchair into the bathroom, for instance. So, I mean, that would, that might cost more than fifteen thousand dollars, but just my thoughts.
Yes, through your advice, I mean, uh, um, I think there's a, a ton of work to be done to this building. Uh, the, the, the minor, you know, well upgrade was just maybe the beginning. And like you said, a new hand, uh, a new accessible washroom would cost. I mean, we did that at the Tamworth Medical Center shortly thereafter, purchasing it. And you were on the, on the hook for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, like really quickly. So and, and because you have to upgrade not only the washroom, but the doors, the, the front, the front entrance to get to the washroom. Um, the whole accessibility path. Um, yeah, there's a lot. And, and I mean, that would be the enabling accessibility fund, like we're, we're, we're just speaking about the enterprise community hall. That would be the same fund that we, we would use that uh, fund in later uh, capacities. I mean, every two years, I think they have a uh, an intake and we would use, just like we did at the Tamworth Medical Center, to try to upgrade the accessibility. But you definitely wouldn't take on a huge project like that with some form of government assistance through grant.
Yeah, I kind of support what Sherry is saying. She's very knowledgeable of the building and I haven't had any issues. I wonder right now if maybe it's the best use of our time or our money on this building until we're assured that we have a viable building and a viable clientele going forward with split, before we spend or decide to spend upgrading the building. A lot of money. I, I think maybe that's one that could be held, especially when we have um, knowledge that it's never been an issue to use the Cistern. You know, it's not a rush. We can drill a well in, in a few days as far as that goes if we have to. It's a matter of finding a well driller. That's it. I, I wouldn't, that, that one, I think, actually I would go with Sherry and say that possibly we could take a look at deleting that one for the time being or putting it on hold.
Anyone else?
Yeah, go ahead, Rob. I, I know you mentioned the uh, the enterprise hall having its own separate um, separate fund is, could we establish something for the Newburgh facility and just set that money aside? So it's already accounted for, it's in the budget if we need it for some reason. And then later on down the road, if we do get a grant, we have to top it up. We've already got some planning in place for that. Does that make sense? Is that something we can do? Specific to that exact building?
Yeah, through, through your replies, yeah, we, I think it might even be on the next slide. We, we're proposing a physician recruitment uh, reserve as well. That would broaden the two buildings uh, or apply to two clinics, sorry. Um, we typically use like a building reserves account that's collective for our township owned buildings. So that public works building, for example, that's being upgraded is out of that building reserve account too. And I just fear that if we start creating a whole bunch of individual reserves and then it becomes confusing as to, well, can we really use some of that for this? Um, it, I, I would encourage that we use that in our general building reserve account. And that fifteen K simply be, it's not going to change the budget if we pull the fifteen out of that and put it into a building reserve because it's still going to be, be going in that direction and sort of spend dollars. Um, but this is something that we'll get back and staff will have for the next meeting on the twentieth for, for council to consider.
Yeah, no problem. Appreciate you clearing that up. One of those things, whenever you find savings in one area, you always want to just make a note of it so that later on, when the money's needed, it's been noted that it came from that area. You follow what I'm saying? It's uh, common for someone to say, I found a few extra dollars, but remember where it came from. That's all. Thank you.
So the slide previous, I think, Brooke, sorry, uh, final line item was transferred to reserve seventy thousand dollars, uh, seven oh one forty-nine oh one. That was um, that is related to, to final finishing, I believe, and CBO Dettler can confirm, but finishing off the new building, the new window and siding of the Tamworth Medical Center. For those of you who's not seen it, it's a, a fairly appeasing property. And so I think the side and the back, for example, are still of the former siding and windows. So finalizing that so that we're not getting the, the rodents, et cetera, eating away at the, the wood siding is what we're proposing through this and it to be paid for out of building, building reserves. Medical centers continued. I'm not going to go through the first really eighty-five thousand dollars, seventy of it for the Tamworth Medical and fifteen for the well at Newburgh. Um, again, that was proposed to be funded out of a solar project, a CVA community vibrancy agreement, but we'll, again, we'll take that away and be back in the twentieth. Respecting that comment, it's noted. The seven oh one fifty-nine oh one is, is kind of contrary to what I just said, Council Fenwick, in that didn't want to create a reserve account that was specific for one thing. But in this situation, I really do feel strong in that we have a reserve account that is set for one thing. Um, and that is ensuring that our residents have a physician. I think this, this council has done an excellent job on committing to our rate payers, our interest in healthcare and and taking on our medical centers and showing that to all of our residents. And we at staff's level and through you as council want to ensure that we're doing that moving forward and protecting our rate payers from a, from a health perspective.
Yeah, I think that's very wise of us to move on the physician recruitment part. I do just a more of a comment broadly. One of the things that came up again at Roma that I found was like kind of interesting um, is that as we know, services have been, more and more things are downloaded onto municipalities. And although I totally support this and we need it, uh, just the argument that sort of healthcare was never supposed to fall on the municipal tax base. And this is one of the ways in which we're sort of subsidizing healthcare in a way. And we need to because it's so essential for development of our community. But that was just something that I had never really considered. And I just thought that was an interesting uh, thing to point out. Um, one other thought that I have on the medical centers part is something that I would like to see. Either like a small budget item, whether it be five, six hundred bucks and having a, a, a doctor welcoming committee. So we have some doctors that we're trying to woo here to stay. And I've heard from other communities sort of really having success. So what, what makes people stay? It's like tying them to place. So what can we do that? You know? A welcome basket that has the, the county trails, cycling maps and local food products, maybe a day where someone takes them to the farmer's market, to the bookstore, around to our communities to really kind of tie into place so that it, once you do that, then people are less likely to leave, especially if they then have families. Something that could be very small budget item, but that might have a good impact in that we have some people that we really want to try to get to stay here. So just as a thought.
Thank you. And I'm glad you raised the point about it's ridiculous that we have to have a physician recruitment reserve. I think it's a great idea. Politically, it's, politically, it's ridiculous. That the province has always supported the healthcare system up until the last few years. And this isn't a shot at any particular political party because it's been going on for decades. And now we're in a crisis situation. So, but we have to do it. It's, it's devolved and it's fallen on us. Thanks. So uh, we've reached your concluding remarks here, Jason.
Thanks, Reeve Wise. Um, so first draft of the budget, we've, we've gone through in, in, in fair detail. Operational of nine point five percent roughly, changing capital of a negative percentage point. And that, I don't get caught up on the numbers on that side. It's really because our treasurer's realigned a lot of operational versus capital expenditures and made sure that we are generally consistent with what we're, what our, what our definitions of each of those are and, and that we've got ourselves set for the future in terms of what truly is operational versus, versus uh, capital. So the um, operating expenditures of, you know, almost eleven million dollars and the operational revenues that we're seeing through grants and permits and reserves and funds, et cetera, bring that down to five point two million plus or minus from a tax levy. I know that number doesn't mean a lot out of context. So to the next slide, to try and give it some context, where we've got some additional revenues, grants, fundings, et cetera, that are, that are, that are adding to that on a revenue front. So bringing that into the need of two, one point three, seven, eight million from a tax levy point of view. Um, the other thing I don't want it to be overlooked is the growth that we've done internally and primarily through the development services department at one point eight percent of growth. That's new builds. That's no new assessment. We're all, we all know that we haven't got a tax bill increase from impact since, what, twenty sixteen, the assessment, right? So that is, that is entirely new, new, new construction. So the, the, the residential or the notional tax rate increase from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, the numbers on the screen equates to two point three percent. The, there's some other numbers here. Statistically speaking, we're going up two hundred and roughly two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from last year to this year. Um, in terms of total dollar figures. The conclusion continued, the three points. So what does that mean from a dollars perspective? Um, look at two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and why? Because that's the median tax assessment of our, of our tax base in stone mills. Um, that means that you'd be looking at a thirty-two dollar and seventy-five cent increase annually to your tax bill. Um, at two point three percent of an increase. That equates to fifteen dollars and two cents for a hundred K and a hundred thousand dollars in assessment. You can do the math and extrapolate that up to whatever number you want. Comparatively, last year, it was nearly double. So twenty twenty-three for a hundred thousand dollar in assessment, we were to twenty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. We're looking at, we're, we're looking at nearly having that in twenty twenty-four. This budget is streamlined. It's efficient. However, it does not bolster any reserves. And that's one point we talked about. Council Milligan, great point. Why are we doing a well if we don't need a well, for example? I don't pulling that out and putting that into a reserve would be our recommendation, and I'm not even consulting staff, would be our recommendation as opposed to taking it out to try and drive down our rate. And I say that because we want to be physically responsible moving forward and not kick that on to the next member of staff or the next member of council. Um, so that there's not a shock and, and in, on any rate payer group or council into the future. Treasurer and I had a conversation today. It's not uncommon for some municipalities to budget a flat one percent to their tax rate that goes a hundred percent into reserves. And that is to ensure that we have reserve contributions in the future that we have comfort in knowing what might change at that time. This budget does not do that. This is a very lean, efficient budget. Um, and I think the next slide, the conclusionary slide will show you how lean and efficient it is when you see some of the numbers from our neighbors. We're nearly, well, sorry. So front neck is, is close, two point seven or two point three. Everyone else, we're nearly half. We, we look, we're looking for, for, for council's comment, for council's suggestions. Um, we think we've done a very detailed review to this point. Um, I commend all of, all of the staff at the head of this table uh, who have done it from a department and a line by line perspective and specifically Anita has found reserves that didn't even know existed. Um, and that's really why we're here. I wrote down four bullet points to say how we've gotten to two point three percent. First is one point eight percent in growth. We all know the hard work of the building department and what, what that's done. And if we didn't have that, we would be up another one point eight percent right off the top. We'd be, you know, nearly, nearly five, four percent. The five hundred and twelve thousand dollars, that was, that's, that's massive in terms of what we're able to do and, and see on our, on our, on our numbers. The reserve account review, I say that because we found reserve accounts that came in East Library. Mr. Davison, Deputy Reeve Davison may have known why and when that was enacted, but the rest of us didn't. And I commend Anita for being able to pull that and find that and utilize what we can in assuring that where we're at. And secondly, aside from a few reserve accounts, like physician recruitment reserve or bag tags and trying to look forward to our landfills, because I think we need to be proactive on those fronts. We haven't done a really good job bolstering our reserves. So I say all that in conclusion because I, as much as we're excited at two point three percent, we as staff, if I, maybe I don't want to go for as far as saying all of staff, but at least myself think maybe we should be a little higher and we should be considering what we should be doing on a reserve allocation point of view um, before trying to champion ourselves as the lowest municipal tax rate increase in the area. Leave it for questions.
Thank you, Jason. So questions or comments uh, at this point? Yes, Wendy?
Uh, I don't see greater Napanee on here, and I know that theirs is really high. Um, that's not a dig to Napanee. I actually own property there. So it's nice to see us at two point three. Um, getting back to the reserve fund. So every year that the auditor would come and give an overview of our uh, financial situation, um, I, I always had one standard question, and that is, um, how are our reserve funds in comparison to other organized municipalities? And the last uh, year, I, I remember that answer was, you're a little above average. Um, not to say you're overly above average, but you're a little above average. So I took a lot of comfort in that. And I think maybe we all need to take a little comfort in that. And so when Anita's finished doing her review of the reserve funds and comes back to us at the next her review of the reserve funds and comes back to us at the next meeting, maybe you could speak to that a little bit and see if that seems to hold true today. And then therefore it might alleviate Jason's concerns a little bit.
It's also worth considering that average includes municipalities that have no reserves at all. So being a little above average doesn't imply that we're in some enviable position. That's right. Yeah, we do have, yeah. There was someone else, I think, over here. Doug, was it? Go ahead, Doug.
I'm going to shock everybody. I'm, I'm a fiscal conservative. And it's always been my belief, I don't like borrowing money. I like to pay my way. I like to put money away. In my own personal life, I put money in the bank. And I think here it's called reserves. We need to do that. This is probably one of the most outstanding budgets that I have seen in a number of years for a first cut. It is very well done, very well presented. And in this time inflation, an excellent number. I think the number's too low. I think we should be adding a half percent to it for reserves, just to, we're taking money out of reserves, we've got to keep them up there. And that's my thought, just to see what other people think. But I'd like to see us up around the 2.8% with that difference being going to reserves. And that would still stand us well in our community. I think especially in the times that we're in today. I don't want to go any higher because it's tough out there today. It's tough. But we have to do business. I'll just leave it at that.
Thanks Doug. Anyone else? Yes, Sherry.
I was actually thinking of 0.5%. It would still keep us under three. Yeah.
I think that sounds very reasonable. And again, it's long-term financial sustainability. And I think it's wise of staff to notice as this is presented that that may be something that we need long-term.
Go ahead, Rob.
I think you're on to something, Doug. The other part too is the money that Anita so wonderfully found for us all and Jeff as well. And a team effort, it sounded like on that. That's a one-shot deal.
Yep.
Next year will not exist unless you have something else you want to tell us, Anita.
You do this every year.
You can do it as many times as you wish. Just, you know, it's, it's, it's wonderful. I was last budget, this is only my second budget. The last one was not bad at all either compared to some of the challenges our neighbors have. This one, I was not expecting to see it's wonderful numbers. And it, it bodes well to previous councils going back and our wonderful staff that find incredible ways. It's just incredible, the team we have and what you can pull off at hard times. So I, I think we need to keep the ball rolling. Nobody's expecting us to come back with a 2.3%. And yeah, we can, we can rake it in and we can celebrate. And then in five years' time, we'll come back with a different, very different story. So I agree with Doug 100%. I was thinking we're rounding off a 3% flat, but I, I get what you're saying, Doug. It, it is tough out there. Everybody's scrambling. A half a percent lift is not unreasonable. It does something. We feel responsible. And it makes up for the fact that next year we might not find 500 grand stuffed in the couch, right? So, yeah, doesn't that sound crazy?
Anyone else? I will just say that at the, at the county level, we have always set aside 2% strictly to go into capital reserve. And we're looking at bumping that up. Did we talk about two and a half percent, Doug? Two and a half. And, 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 and sort of raising that because what's on the horizon doesn't look very promising financially and environmentally for that, from that standpoint. So I think there seems to be a consensus around the table to add a half a percentage and, and come back on the 20th with that built into whatever you come back with. So I will say that's great unless someone has, yes, Crystal Lee, go ahead.
Only one final thing I wanted to mention. And I know, I see a strategic plan. We have 20,000. I know that's what we said last year. I'm not set on this, but I almost would want in my mind, like a little more in there. I don't know what that, I would have to do, like I have to have more research to compare. But just in the idea of the way that I'd envision this strategic plan happening, which would be lots of public engagement sessions. And I don't, and, and I just wonder if that would be, if that would be better for it to be a little more for what I would like to get out of it. But I don't have enough experience to say yes or no on that. So.
Is that basically just the cost of a facilitator, Jason?
Yeah. Yeah, Reeve Wise, thanks. It, it is exactly that. It's a facilitator because we see it as a, as a staff-led slash public input process with council as opposed to a consultant-led. And that's why the lesser number. For example, we were looking at others that are, like other plans run by a consultant that are triple and, and four times that because this is really just the facilitator.
Okay. Yes, Anita.
Through you Reeve Wise, I have a couple of notes here. If we actually take the 25,000 for the defer for the tables and chairs out of the budget, that will reduce the rate as well. And then we're going to move the 15,000 into a reserve for, instead of the well. Do you want the increase to be 2.8? So it would be the cap percent plus the 25? Or you just, yeah.
That was my understanding. Yeah. Yeah. Wenda?
2.76.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's the way, that's, no, that's the way to go. Yeah. Anything else at this point then? Well, thank you, staff. This was a very well, as Doug said, a very well structured budget and very, very clear explanation. We do have all the line items in the binder though. I didn't have time to go through every single line item. I would encourage people to at least make an attempt at that before the next meeting in case you spot something you have questions about or suggestions. Otherwise, we'll, we'll pick this up again on the 20th, is it? Yep.
Tuesday.
The Tuesday. That's right.
That's right. We got a holiday Monday. We've got Tuesday, the 20th for this. We have a staff meeting before, I believe, a public meeting, like a
That's right. Yeah.
Planning component at five.
Yeah.
So we'll bring some food, have it in between, and then we'll be back into some agricultural discussions and council setting as well as budget.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Can I, do we need a confirmation of proceedings for this one, Brandy?
I haven't got my agenda in front of me just in a moment.
Okay. Can I get a motion of Jerry and Sherry and Crystal Lee, all in favor? It's Gary. Thanks, everyone.